But I will note, we have the president and director, Ushka is on her way. She's currently caught in the notorious bike traffic. So she should be joining us momentarily. Can you hear me now? With that, we'll move on. The agenda shows as the first item, the Arlington Elementary Design. We actually understand that our colleagues, Parks, Parks and Recreation, go first with their presentation, and we are happy to accommodate you. It's a 90-minute study session, so we've allocated 45 minutes to each session. And with that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate you taking this time. We know this has been a large endeavor, and the board has been eagerly looking forward to an opportunity to talk about the Eastside Community Center and to talk about where we are and what needs to be done. So, thank you very much. And Steve, are you gonna kick us off?
I can give us an introduction, yeah.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to introduce our colleagues from MetroParks. We have Dave Lewis, Director of Recreation and Community Service, and Jeremy Woolley, Project Management, from their Capital Projects Group. So, they're gonna take us through an overview of the Eastside Community Center. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Dave.
Thank you, Board of Directors. We're very pleased to be able to be here tonight to give you an update. We'll try to be as brief as we can, although it's such an exciting project that we could talk for days about it, so we'll try to be brief with it. Tonight, we'll give you a little overview of where the project started, how it started, some of the outreach that we've gone through, where we are right now currently with the project, and then a timeline as we move forward. As you're aware, June of 2013, MetroParks teamed up with the City of Tacoma, Tacoma Public Schools, and Tacoma Housing Authority to hire A R C Architects to conduct a feasibility study about creating and designing, building a community center on Tacoma's east side through really robust outreach, the creation of a steering committee made up of community members, east side community service providers, as well as public agencies. They completed the feasibility study and published it in February of 2014. What the study confirmed was that it is indeed a huge need on the east side, that we do need more robust community programs, that we don't have facilities currently on the east side to accommodate. It pointed towards five or six locations in the east side of Tacoma as locations that should be studied, obviously narrowed it down to the First Creek area to be the most viable and would serve the purpose and reach most of the goals that the project needed. It pointed to a building roughly about 60,000 square feet, with roughly half of it being a new aquatic center and half of it being what we call the dry side or the community center with various community programs. Budget for the project was stated somewhere between 30 and 35 million for the project, which includes upgrades to the campus, which not just the community center, but we know with the campus concept, similar to Sarah Campus, we want the buildings to work together and outside amenities, outside of the community center, such as playgrounds and connection to Swan Creek, connection to Salashan, we're all part of making this community center and the campus come alive. It did also point to the very strong need for the center and the campus to be multi-generational and also to be multifunctional, where instead of having dedicated space to do really specific programming, it pointed to a large number of the amenities within the facility needed to be multipurpose, because there's such a diverse group with such diverse needs, they really need to have a lot of multipurpose space in that. I'm gonna turn it over to Jeremy, who's gonna talk to you about where we got to where we are with the site, share the preferred location, and a little more about the building process that we're in right now.
Can you guys still, is this? I'll use this one. All right. So, as David mentioned, during the feasibility study, we had looked at several sites that would be advantageous to not only collaborate with the schools, but also be the most ideal site for, there we go, most ideal site for this collaboration. We ended up zeroing in on kind of the First Creek area primarily because its location to First Creek Middle School, its location to T H A and the surrounding east side community, as well as our second-largest natural area, Swan Creek Park. And the diagram that's on the displays right there show a portion of the immediate service area, that through the feasibility study, we've kind of noted as the primary area, but not the extents. And so, after, through coordination with A R C Architects, who is the architect helping us through not only the feasibility study, but also through schematic design, master planning, et cetera, they've helped us kind of investigate a couple areas on the site that a 60,000-square-foot building could potentially be placed. This process led us through investigating multiple areas and really narrowing it down to two main possibilities that would work for a number of criteria, which we'll refer to as option one and option two. In multiple meetings with Tacoma Public School staff, with internal meetings, we've kind of gone through the criteria of what we hope to really get out of this project, and how each one of these sites could potentially lend themselves to the best solution. In looking at option two, we realized that there were a lot more negatives to it than positives. The primary negatives are, as you can see, it's actually within category three wetland, not just impacting a buffer. And so, this causes some concern, as well as some impact to cost and schedule, as well as potential unknowns when we actually construct the building. So, that lent us to option number one, primarily because of its potential to bracket the site for security purposes. With option two, you see it's very close to Portland Avenue, and it was our view that that would potentially cause almost the pedestrians to want to cross in the middle of Portland as opposed to safe crossing zones. And so, with option one, it's actually aligned with 56 on the pedestrian path of some of the public transit. It's also outside of the wetlands, completely kind of negating that potential issue, while still having the flexibility of entering in the buffer, so that we can enhance the wetland and actually leave a betterment for the site. So, I think with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back to Dave, and he can talk about some of our more kind of community outreach and some of the other elements that help feed into the overall program.
The original feasibility study pointed to the types of programs and the audiences to which we needed to serve in this new center and on the campus. We took that preliminary information, again, met with the steering committee many times to make sure we understood what the community need is on the campus. We engaged the steering committee in what we were calling our community cafe concept, in that we didn't want to just do all the outreach ourselves, or even our partners do the outreach, but we wanted the community cafes to engage the steering committee in engaging their neighbors. We held about 30 of these meetings, and each of the meetings were hosted by steering committee members, again, rather than us hosting the workshops to get the input. We wanted them to get input from their community. About 30 of them, and about 350 people participated. We used that information, along with the information that we got from the first feasibility study, to create our first program plan. The program plan identifies all of the services that are needed in the community center, even beyond MetroParks' mission-led programs. We obviously want this to be not a typical recreation center, but really a true community center, where many of the services that we wouldn't normally do are still part of it, because that has risen as a huge need for this community, is not just typical parks programs, but beyond that, the services. We created the first program plan, which is now being tested via a survey that's on the streets to the east side currently. We'll get that survey data, hone in on not only the services, make sure that we've included everything that we've heard, but also understand a little more about pricing. Obviously, we want to make this a center that the neighbors can afford to go to, but still stay sustainable for long term, but also understand the depth of programs. So, we know the types of services that the community wants, but we also want to understand how much of that do they need. The, I think the most positive part about this project is, the more people we talk to, the more people we run into that want to get involved. You know, we've all had projects that didn't seem like it had the highest level of interests that we'd like to have, but literally every time we have a meeting, there are new partners and new ideas that come out of this. We've recently had conversations with the Health Department about some really unique programs that they want to launch, that get to solving the problem of the food desert that we have on the east side through a couple of programs, one of them being a food incubator, where we're not only teaching people how to get food, healthy food, and cook it, but also how to make food in industry or business, so that people can become their own entrepreneurs and understand that better. We've also heard from them that they have done feasibility studies on actually creating a line of food from locally grown product that could be produced and packaged at the center, sold locally at a discounted price, but also at some of the higher-end markets where people are willing to pay for it. So, creates a multi-tiered, sustainable product where you can feed your local neighbors, but also make some profit on it for the entrepreneurship as well. So, we're excited about that. Some other unique things that we've heard that you wouldn't think of in a typical community center, a production studio, where, again, we can have kids learning through music, but also it could be a studio where we then help forward the music industry and provide a place for people who can't afford studio time to be able to do that. So, those are some really great ideas that we have. Again, we're gonna understand depth of program a little bit more, so we will revise the program plan again between now and the end of the year. Currently, we have the second draft of the program plan, which is now starting to lend the information that we need to get into schematic design. We've just started to look at the building, start to put together the amenities that we have heard so far that need to be in the building, and start to look at the schematic design. Our next steps are, we have, again, the feasibility study had an original pro forma in it. We are now, again, testing that with our staff. They have aquatics experts that told us how much revenue we can bring in, what the expenses are gonna be, but we want to make sure that those are real numbers, again, that we can sustain throughout. So, we'll have a completed pro forma, again, by the end of this calendar year. So, by the end of the calendar year, we'll have schematic design done, the master plan for the entire campus, again, with connections to Swan Creek, better connections to First Creek Middle School, lighting, pathways, wayfinding signage. We know all of those things are key to moving traffic throughout the campus. Learning from some of the issues that we have at Sarah, signage is not good on that campus yet. We've got some lighting issues, we've got some parking issues. As we go through these projects, the more we can learn from our mistakes, obviously the better facilities we build moving forward. So, our four key deliverables by the end of the year are to have a third draft of the program plan, which then drove the schematic design, which will be by the end of the year, the master plan for the entire campus, and then the pro forma. So, we'll have a good understanding of what the building is gonna be, the programs inside it, and then what it's gonna take for us as partners to operate the building. With that, I think I've given you a pretty full scope of what we've done and where we are now. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions or comments from the board? Director Wensko.
So, the south end community center is located off South Tacoma Way. How different will this be, oh, excuse me, how different will this be from that? I mean, I see the specialized programs possibly, but will it be pretty much the same as far as what you hope to get from it?
Some of it will be the same. Again, it's a slightly different audience on the east side than South Tacoma, so we really will customize to that neighborhood. You'll see a lot of the same things. Fitness will be a key component to it. Star Center does not have an aquatic facility.
Oh, yeah.
So, we'll obviously add that in, and the intention is, once the center opens, we'll close the Portland Avenue Community Center and east side pool, consolidate not only the services that we offer now, but obviously offer enhanced services as well. Some of the same programs you'll see that are important. We'll have a child watch, so, again, we can move forward this multi-generational concept where parents can go to work out and bring their kids at the same time, or bring their kids for a child art program and then work out. Again, fitness is a big component, child watch a big component, we'll have lots of art programming, ballet, very, very similar. The east side is also said very important piece for them is a social hall, so it'll probably be actually roughly 25% larger social hall than Star Center has, which does a nice job of serving right now, but it'll be even larger.
Is the social hall the one that's away at the end?
Yeah, it's on the south end, it's called Journey Hall, yeah.
So...
And the new center will have a gym in it as well. Star Center does not have a gym. We share that space.
Okay. So, is the park district going to be the operator of this, or?
We are, yes.
Okay. And so, the pool, how is that gonna be funded, the operation of the pool?
Currently, the operation of the pool, we will use subsidy, both from Portland Avenue and the pool, use that subsidy to run the new community center. We don't completely have all the pro forma put together yet for the aquatic center, but we'll be operating that.
So, are you looking at the city, the schools, and the parks to fund that on a continuous basis, like the heating of the pool and lifeguards and that kind of thing, or you haven't even gotten there yet?
We have not gotten there yet.
Hmm. I may have something more later, but...
Okay. Director Ushka.
Forgive me for coming in late. I am interested in the survey that you did before. I was part of some of the initial survey and dialogue of the center, and what survey you're doing now and who you're including.
I'm not sure specifically.
How are you conducting the survey on the east side?
Sure. The survey right now, we are partnered with Triangle Two Daxco, and they're doing a phone survey, and it's primarily focused on east side.
So, I'm an east side resident, and I have a cellphone. How are you getting non-residential phones?
Sorry, I don't have that information for you, but I can get that. I know it is primarily a residential phone, and I don't know if they're mixing in cellphones or not on that.
Are you doing anything in multilinguals?
Yeah, we did bring that up with them, that that's important.
Are you doing any outreach to community groups?
As part of the survey?
Correct.
We did that through the community cafes and also with the steering committee.
So, this is a third level, trying to hit a different segment?
Yes, correct.
I would be really interested in seeing your response rate to that.
Sure.
I am a strong advocate for good community outreach that I know is very, very difficult to do, and I think it's important that we are reflective of a very diverse community if it's going to be a successful asset for us.
Sure. I'll share all that data.
I also want to be the first person to rent that hall, and I want to have a big east side social.
Vice President Biel.
Oops, okay. I have some questions. First of all, if you're going to include agencies other than us, like Health Department, nonprofits, and so on, are we gonna be charging them for space?
It'll be a similar setup to our community centers as we do now. It's based on if it's an outside program, or if it's our program, and how the partnership works together.
I don't, I'm not real familiar exactly with how that works. I know you have one. I guess the question I'm asking, would you be looking at charging the Health Department, for example, to be occupying space there?
The Health Department won't occupy permanent space. We will partner with them to provide the programming in the center, in which it's essentially our program that we would connect with them to help deliver that service.
If there are agencies that will be operating permanently out of there, will you be charging for space?
Most likely, yes. Similar to leases that we have in other buildings, if it's permanent space, we typically would have a lease.
What I'm trying to figure out, in my mind, being a little bit of a budget person, is how this is all gonna pencil.
Sure.
You know, we've all had issues with M and O, and I know MetroParks for the last 40 years has had issues with M and O, and I want to make sure that if this building proceeds forward, that those costs are covered, because we don't want to build a building that we can't afford to sustain. I mean, that would not be what we wanted to. Other question is that this will be located, obviously, on a site of a fairly good-sized middle school. And if you're gonna offer a variety and myriad of programs and people coming and going all day, how are you planning on making sure that there's not adverse impacts on the school during that time?
Well, if you could do more than touch, I'd appreciate it.
Well, yeah, I mean, hopefully I'll be able to answer your question, but the, part of the other reason of, and I'll go back to this, part of the other reason for really seeing the benefit of option one as a viable option for site location, is it not only just bookends the site, but then it also separates the uses when there's parking there. The vast majority of the parking for people using the center will be after the hours that most of the population are using the middle school. So, after the kids are there, after they've been picked up, then we'll start to see the rise in activity at the community center, and so there will be a level of separation that had it been, had we pursued option two, there would have been a whole lot more of that kind of co-mingling and not as much of that separation. The other aspect is, we see kind of the flip side of that, is that this now offers the opportunity of the school staff and the MetroParks staff of actually being co-vigilant of the site, adding security and a security element to not only the participants at the center, but also the staff and the community at large. Do you feel like there's anything else? Did I answer your question?
Somewhat, yeah, somewhat.
We have done preliminary traffic and parking studies on the site. Steve and Rob have both looked at those, and it's not a final product yet. We're still designing.
No, I understand.
How to work through this, and Jeremy used the term bracketing earlier, and one of the things I think the school district staff has been excited about is the opportunity to create less of an opportunity, if that makes any sense, to have things on the outer rim of the campus.
Correct.
Have some of those things go away as the community center then sets the stage to the south, where you have to come inside to something to have the activity that we don't really want here. So, we hope that that adds to the safety of the campus.
Okay, thank you. I think that's enough for now. I might have some more later. Thanks.
With traffic volumes, how much traffic do we have through that campus currently?
In terms of number of visits per day?
Yeah.
I don't actually have that data in front of me, so I can get back to you in a Friday report.
Okay. And I guess what I'm looking for is that data with the estimated traffic volume that's going to come as a result of the community center, and how we're gonna manage it.
Have you looked at traffic volume?
Without having the actual report in front of me, I'm going to go a little off-script a little bit, but we did have, our design team has a traffic engineer under contract for their services here, and they've done preliminary studies of kind of the traffic volume, and what will be needed to not only meet the need that this future center will bring, but also exceed that, so that there's a little bit of overlap if there is an event at both spaces. That way, kind of both the First Creek Middle School and the Eastside Community Center can be sustainable from even a parking standpoint or a traffic standpoint with site circulation. Without numbers in front of me, I can't necessarily give you a hundred and...
So, those numbers would be helpful, so that we can understand, because we're not necessarily wanting to draw as many people as we can, and so without understanding the methodology, it's tough to assess the viability of that site.
Okay. I was just gonna ask context of your question, if we gave you specific numbers of how many cars entered the site and how many buses entered the site, and then how many users of the community center are projected based on maybe comparisons to other centers? Is that, would that satisfy?
Yeah, I would like to know how many people are at that campus on a daily basis, because it seems like you would use that to drive out how many people could we accommodate in addition, because our primary purpose is to serve the students in the building, and secondary is how do we support those students and their families in the community with these supplemental services?
Sure.
So, there's gotta be a delta in there, where we say, you could have, 60,000 square feet still the design of the building, and how many people on, what does that accommodate? How many people could you have in there at any given time? There's gotta be some way to flesh out, so we know.
There is.
And then hours of operation, so my ears perked up, because there would be a way then to talk about, you're not gonna open the facility before nine in the morning, and you would stagger it, so that you don't have an influx of people coming to use the pool, you don't have water aerobics going on at the same time we're trying to get students off campus. So, those sorts of numbers, and we talked about it a few days ago, but the traffic safety in light of us having had three kids hit in the last couple of weeks is super important. We need to figure this out, how we're going to safely move people in and out, because I see, and I guess without the plans and the numbers, it's difficult for me to envision how you're gonna move people in and out of there, because I know getting in and out of First Creek can be a little challenging. You've got those long driveways to get in there.
Exactly.
And so, what happens when they congest? What happens if you've got kids now darting through, because there's these long lines of traffic, and they're trying to get through? And I'd like to see a thoughtful analysis and representation of how we're gonna address that.
Good question.
I have something to say.
Director Wensko.
So, I, actually, in 1984, whenever they opened that east side pool, I went to that opening, which was kind of cool, but I know that a lot of people like those really early morning swims, and a lot of adults before they go to work, and so I think that would be important to the community to have that available. I know that also, when GALT was up there, we did have swim lessons for the students as part of P E. Is that still a plan with the school? Are they coming to you saying this would be a really good idea?
Prelimarily, we think there will be school use at the aquatic center.
One of the things that we have been talking about from our planning and construction side for the last few years is leveraging community assets, and I think the teams on both sides have done a good job in looking at what amenities does First Creek need or could make use of, and vice versa, how does the community center bracket this campus and reduce the duplication of program amenities on both sides, but leverage it for community use for us all. And the conversations around creating some spaces that students can, you know, when First Creek population is booming like it is now, what kind of space utilization can the district use, because our flex times are kind of opposite in terms of our high demand, and so it's kind of a complementary relationship. And in the parking studies, they're looking at adequate parking based on their other community centers and driving that as a demand factor. I do agree that we need to look at how they enter and exit the site. They are proposing that we, right now, there's a separate bus loop and a separate automobile loop, and we're looking at modifying that, so that the buses don't come through that front entry too, adding another level of congestion, that they come off and just enter directly into the loop and then exit back out on the north side of the site. And so, then looking at that entryway gives us the opportunity to expand that and gives the opportunity to get cars to peel off into the community center earlier. So, but we'll get back to you with graphics and numbers.
Okay.
So, I have another question about the wetlands.
So, Director Wensko, if you both have questions related to the parking that I would raise, I would defer my time, but I'd like to get through my questions before we go back to the second round of questions.
Oh, I thought you were done. I thought you were finished.
I have a question about parking, but either...
Well, no, Director, if it's relevant to my line, I would be happy to, I would be happy to yield the floor to you.
Okay. In regards to traffic flow, there's been, I've definitely walked the site on Portland in regards to traffic flow and the problems there, and I think that we definitely want to talk with the city about traffic calming along that path, because no matter what we think or say, it will increase pedestrian traffic. Along those same lines, in terms of program usage and when it's open versus the school, I would concur with Director Wensko in terms of the pool use in the morning. I taught my kids how to sw- well, I hired somebody to teach my kids how to swim over at the east side pool, and even in the early mornings, there was very few people there, so I don't know if there's a way to say, here's traffic for, or parking for that, the smaller bits in the morning, and here's more open spaces, because what I'm hearing too, based on the reflections that I heard from you, is we're not gonna be able to do a huge fundraising lunch during the school hours, because it's going to be too much traffic. So, the use of that community space is going to be limited by hours of the day and dictated by the school schedule to some degree. Is that accurate?
I think that's accurate. It's gonna take a lot of coordination between the two. This isn't gonna necessarily address traffic per se, but from a parking perspective, there are 203 spots between Star Center and Boys and Girls Club. Currently, there's about 160 spots at First Creek. This site location adds about 230, so we would get to about 400 spots, where Star Center has a little over 200.
Oh.
So, it's almost doubling in the use between Star Center and the Boys and Girls Club. Wouldn't quite be what this center in... Wouldn't quite be what this center and First Creek Middle School is, but it's literally doubling the, the parking spots.
Okay. And I have other questions, but they're not related to this.
Deputy Superintendent Garcia.
Just real quickly, the staff's been working together with some guiding principles. One is that the educational program at First Creek is the first in primary, both on the park side as well as ours. And so without knowing the exact program, we haven't been able to reach those kind of details about time in there. But there's a, there's a genuine commitment on the park staff as well as the other partner staff to recognize, they're not gonna be asking for First Creek space during First Creek time. With that said, it may take extra staff on both parts, meaning not full-time staff, but to coordinate events and just master calendaring out events so that we're intentional of, we're not offering open house and a big event at the, at the same time. And we feel pretty confident that we can get there. I think when the team brings you back some more details around parking and exiting and stuff, that'll give you a stronger sense of where they see the opportunities. We have also talked about, just one of your concerns about unsafe areas, Portland Avenue, about the ability to enhance that part of the neighborhood with better signage, traffic flow, lighting, that in ultimately can help our First Creek kids as well as some other kids that are traveling there. So a lot of work still has to be done. And then really wanted to bring you folks up to speed of where we are. Get these questions from you so that we could take them back and then bring you back more information.
Okay. Budget, are you still in the thirty to thirty-five million dollar range?
Yeah, we haven't got far enough long to really change that number. We're still in the schematic phase, but-
And have you identified a funding source?
Multiple, yes.
And do you anticipate asking the school district for money?
Not at this point.
Okay.
The school district's been pretty clear about, and to ask Director, Wenskell's comment is, is we see great value in the community to operate this. This is, this will be their program, meaning the Metro Parks, and we'll work to enhance. We're not in a place to run a, a community center, but we do think that working in collaboration, we can truly be partners in supporting that. So we're not working at re-establishing supervision of the pool, things along those lines. With that said, we may share, very similar to what we have our long history with the Metro Parks, share facilities and exchange of facilities. And we have a great mechanism under your leadership where we actually go back and forth and say, what would it cost to rent that? And what did we cost over here? And how do we balance those pieces out? And so we'll be in that same kind of relationship if this happens.
Well, and I like, so I'm a big proponent of the co-location of these sorts of campuses. I think that critical to their success is that we ensure that they're not redundant, that, that they are supplemental and not duplicative. So that's what I'll be interested to see as we flesh out the programming. I think that that Sarah campus works nicely because there is a balance between what the Star Center offers and what the Boys and Girls Club offers and what Gray has on campus. I think if you're using that as the model, I like that. I think there's a nice blending there. If we start to see things that are duplicating services, that are being our programs, activities that are occurring in First Creek, then I'll wanna see a justification for that duplication because there's a financial cost. And none of us have enough money. And that's the beauty of the partnership, is we're able to leverage resources and close those gaps to provide those needed services for kids and families. Vice President Viall.
On, on the parking thing, this isn't a question about parking per se, but that already is an area that has high water table. And when you put more asphalt, are you gonna use permeating surfaces or how are you gonna handle that runoff? Because we know what that looks like down on the corner of fifty-six in Portland.
So one of, one of the, the main strategies that we're looking at, and it's, it's going to have multiple benefits, benefits down the road. As you can see, just west, so west is down and north is to the left.
I learned that when I was in school.
Yeah, just, just down of First Creek, there's the, there's the storm water retention, which, which is, which is used to, to help mitigate some of the storm, storm runoff from the asphalt and from the building itself. So there's, there's going to be similar, similar design features that help mitigate some of that, and previous concrete may be one of those.
Well, I'm sure the city is gonna be very concerned about that during the permitting process.
Right, right. But, but beyond that, so there, there are multiple different strategies that we have yet to, to fully, fully decide on in how, how we approach from a design standpoint, how to mitigate some of these issues. But in regards to, to the specific issue of, of the wetland itself flooding and coming onto Portland Avenue, part of that is, is the soil retention. Part of it is also just the, the class of wetland it is. And not being a wetland specialist, I can't, I can't fully say this with, with a hundred percent certainty, but understanding the system well enough. One of the things that we, we are wanting to, to actually spend our money on is the enhancement of the wetland, which will bring in different, different species of, of plant matter and different, hopefully different, different fauna into the area. But the, actually enhancing the wetland itself will actually help retain that and filter out some of that water a little bit better. So it's not just, just pooling onto Portland Avenue.
You're talking about almost doubling that space for parking is what I heard. Additional spots, that's a lot of asphalt, that's a lot of runoff, and that's gonna run downhill. Last time I remembered, water goes downhill. And so, you know, I know that, that flooding of that intersection is gonna be a, a real consideration, I know, for the city. I mean, they're already having enough issues, as are we, because, and we know now global warming is for real. We are warmer, we are gonna have more of these, used to be hundred-year storms pretty often. So I would ask if you give, pay real due diligence to that at this point.
It's one of, one of our main, our main design challenges that we're working with our design team.
Well, that's why I'm raising it, because, you know, my husband used to be deputy director of State Department of Ecology and was involved in all that kind of stuff. And so he said, ask him. So I am.
Very good.
Great.
All right, so we have about seven minutes left. Director, Director Wenskell, did you have some additional questions?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a little bit about that wetland, because is, isn't it that we have replaced, made that a wetland to replace some property elsewhere? Do you know that? I mean, you know how you can get credits? It's not. It's a, it's a regular wetland. So are you envisioning maybe making it more compact, deeper? Or, I mean, can you do that? And then, I mean, what's your vision for it? Is it gonna be the same size as it is? Or is it gonna be a different shape or?
So, so one of the, with, with wetland mitigation, we have, we have basically two different options. We can either enlarge it or we can enhance it.
Oh, okay. So you can make it smaller? When you say enhance, so-
You, basically you, you create, you, you double the volume. So enlargement is a two-to-one ratio. Enhancement is you enhance eight-to-one of the volume. So you enhance eight, eight square feet for every one square foot of current class-three wetland to actually have a little bit more of, of what we traditionally view a wetland to, to have with cattails and other reed species and some of the other, other plant-based species. And so kind of also in conjunction, as, as we've been collaborating with, with you guys at Tacoma Public Schools, is we're wanting to, to also design into this, if, if we do, and, and we've almost all collectively wanted to enhance the wetlands to make it more of an amenity. It, it gives us the opportunity to, to partner with you guys as STEM, STEM science, am I? And next-gen science curriculum require more outdoor, outdoor time. And we see this wetland as potentially being a great asset, not, not only for this community, but also for, for the students at First Creek. So does that, did that answer relatively?
All right. Director Eschka, last question to you.
On the theme of wetlands, when I look at buildings and the way they go up in my neighborhood, I always worry about crime prevention by environmental design. And that's gonna back up onto some flora and fauna. So particularly when you wanna make it denser and make sure that you're giving, providing habitat, I think that's going to be an opportunity to face an interesting challenge when you look at those two things together. At the same time, it's an urban environment. So how do we protect the wetland? So when you go out and do your science project, you can still find a frog. So opportunity number two. And last but not least, it really becomes a bunch of open water when there's a lot of kids around. So I think that there's a lot of great opportunity for a pretty innovative way to make sure that we can incorporate nature into an urban learning environment that's both safe for the nature and safe for the people. And so I look forward to what you bring forward, because it would be great, be great to have another nationally-known asset in Tacoma. And why not on the east side?
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. And the partnership that we fostered with the Parks Department and the way that our staffs are working so well together to the benefit of kids and families in Tacoma. And we'll look forward to the next update.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
And that'll bring up item number two on the agenda this evening, the Arlington Elementary Design.
So Mr. Wenskell is gonna lead us through that discussion also. Thanks again.
Thank you, Board President Hines and Board Directors and Superintendent Santorno and Deputy Superintendent Garcia. It's an exciting time right now in planning and construction as we're starting to realize a vision that we've been working on for several years. And just about a year ago, we had a board study session on our visioning document that really crafted a new way to look at facilities and look at the activities and the way we approach education. And so tonight, we are gonna try and wrap up, well, at least get you to a level of up-to-date-ness on the two years of conversations that we've been having around the design and vision document and how it's manifested in the projects around you. So I'm gonna turn this over to the Director of Planning and Construction, Mr. Swatzky.
Hello, there we go. This is exciting. I've been looking forward to this board study session very close to when I started in March. And, and so we've been planning, we put it off from September to now. And I think it was good. It gave us more time to talk about the relationship between all of our projects and in particular Arlington. So I need to go back here a little bit. Somehow it got way forward. And so I'm just gonna go all the way back. Here we go. We wanna drive home a message, and good teaching and learning begins with setting objectives and talking about goals. So our objectives, our goals for tonight are to make a very clear statement that the education landscape has changed. As Steve said, two years of conversations. Before I was on board, many of you involved in those conversations about what should teaching and learning look like? How do we wrap educational best practice in, with the walls that we put up? You're helping us change the standards that we designed to, and we sincerely appreciate it. One thing that is constant is change. It's the one thing we can count on. It continues. So I brought a couple props. I'm just gonna walk up here. And I know it seems a little unruly. So I, I wanted to show you a couple of things. I'm a golfer. And the first club I ever hit for a driver was this one right here. It's a persimmon wood. It works. Even today, it still works. I mean, I'll hit it every now and then. I love the sound of the crack when you hit it out of a chute. And it just makes a sound that no other club makes. And it works. And I can hit it, you know, two forty, two fifty. That's about it. Things changed over time. This is my new baby. This is the tailor-made R-15. It's not made of wood. It's made of metal, very thin metal on the face. It has weights on the bottom that can move around. You can take the shaft out. You can change the loft and the lie. There's a lot of technology in this club. And I can hit this over three hundred yards. The landscape of golf changed. So quick analogy, we'll come back to that later. It's a little diversion. I wanna let you know, we're gonna do things a little differently tonight, too. I'm gonna talk at you a little bit, which we would call lecture format. It's an instructional practice, and it's okay. It works. It's traditional, and it's good for some things. But we're gonna get up and move and look at a few things. And Joanne from Alum's gonna help us through a process. Thirty years ago, or more, when we learned to read, we learned to read. It worked. And we did it a certain way, because there was a body of research that was about this big. A lot of time has passed. We know a lot about reading. And we do it differently. It was the old right way, which worked. And now there's a new right way. And we do it. And it works. And it helps us create better learning environments for our kids. So Arlington is the first of seven elementary projects that, it's, it's gonna help pave the way for the way those projects look. We wanna develop, we wanna continue to have dialogue with you about the shared vision for our school facilities. We want to update you on all of the projects that are going on and show you some of the similarities between the design concepts that are there. And we want to continue to have your help to set direction for our future capital projects. So our goal and objective for this meeting would be to come away with a shared understanding of the direction that we're moving in with your support. And we wanna see design that supports best instructional practice and healthy learning environments. So Tacoma has been a place of innovation. And as I look back through history, it looks like it started back in two thousand and one, where a four-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond was passed. And that people began watching what we would do. And they started looking at, how are we going to engage kids differently in the classroom? It's been a transformational process continuing, showing that the built environment can support both traditional and progressive practices and everything in between. We're looking at agile learning environments. And I put up on the screen here in, in front of you now, some of the things that you've done. STEM, Montessori, IB, art-infused curriculum. There's a whole host of things that you have done. Arlington becomes the next iteration of innovation in Tacoma. The spaces that we're proposing allow for traditional and progressive teaching methodologies. So where have we been? We're looking at larger flexible classrooms. We're looking at breakout areas. If you look at Baker and Geiger and some of the others, there are, there are areas like that. We're talking about connections to outdoor learning in the vein of science. We're talking about multi-use spaces. And that means every square foot, every square foot is used in multiple ways so that we're efficient in the way that we're building. Innovation takes calculated risk. So where are we going? In order to have world-class learning environments, we have to look within Tacoma, within Washington State, around the country and around the world to see what's happening in innovation. How can we support world-class learning environments and best instructional practice? So the visioning document that Steve referenced, we came up with guidelines that would help us begin the process of design and move us through to completion. How has teaching and learning changed? What is best instructional practice? And how do we mix it up in the classroom and support teachers in what they're doing? One of the things about agile learning environments is that hour by hour, day by day, teachers can rearrange their classrooms as they need to quickly without interrupt, interrupting the flow of instruction. I remember back when I was a principal and a teacher, and one of the things that teachers normally do is they break kids into groups because they recognize the need for collaboration and, and shared learning experiences with kids, pure tutoring. I would send kids into the hallway. And when I sent them into the hallway, I immediately lost supervision because there wasn't transparency between the classroom and the hallway. So one of the things we're looking at is how can we create those transparencies so that when teachers are doing what they're already doing, they can send kids out? Those hallways are bigger. They're more, have more comfortable furnishings that are flexible in those areas. And they're doing the same kinds of things that they've done for years, only in a, in a way that's safer, in a way that allows them to manage their craft better. The process that folks went through involved students, teachers, principals, deputy superintendents, superintendents, assistant superintendents, architects, and other people in the industry to talk about what are the kinds of things that we want kids doing? How are kids going to learn in the future? How are teachers going to teach in the future? And out of this came our, our guiding principles. So I took a couple of those that resonate with me. One was number seven, becoming a community asset. How do we look at a building differently? And you've had this conversation. So a library resource, community events for neighbors who are able to come in and use the space, perhaps rental revenues increased. Community program spaces, the Housing Authority, YMCA, all of these programs that are already there, creating space- YMCA, all of these programs that are already there, creating spaces that they can still use. And the flexible and agile spaces, number nine, pure tutoring, flexible grouping, differentiated learning, team teaching. All of these things that we can do is we devise spaces that allow for the traditional and the progressive. Out of this also came the notion of relationships of the built environment and methodologies. And so looking at spaces that could allow individuals, kids to be self-guided in their learning and take ownership, and then looking at spaces that can take five kids, or 10 to 30, or larger, with community groups coming in. So how do the adjacencies work? What do the spaces look like? Out of that came the ideas of how are we teaching and how are our kids learning? And from that came the thinking, discovering, creating, imparting, and exchanging. It's different than, what we're doing now is different than just building boxes and hallways. What we're trying to do is wrap teaching methodology in space and create spaces that is going to support the kind of learning that our kids are doing. And so this next short video kind of gives you a quick idea. Do we have someone who's going to click that on for us? This is a great quick snippet of-
Our current education system has its roots in the industrial age of society. Today's traditional classroom was designed before the advent of modern technology, before we really understood how varied the individual needs of each student were, and before we looked at the entire system as a whole. To truly improve this system, we must break it down and reimagine the environment to more actively engage each and every kind of learner. So we must look at all the different areas of their lives, home, future work environment, social experience, and implications of technology, and realize that today's students are much more social and enjoy learning in a less structured way with their friends anytime, anywhere. If they're awake, they are on and connected. Learning is no longer limited to the confines of the traditional classroom. The success of each individual student must be the driving force behind this transformation. And just as we reconsider learning, we should also reconsider the architecture that supports it. We must look carefully at today's students and the mission of education before we begin to design. Great schools are where students own their learning, and the school itself affords them a variety of work environments and opportunities for collaboration. Whether it's individual study, small groups, large groups, formal or informal, students are taking a more self-directed role, and teachers are becoming coaches and mentors, guiding the efforts of the student with every space, every surface considered for possible learning opportunities. The solution, although unique to each educational community, must be flexible, adaptable, high-performance, sustainable, and technology-rich. All of this to provide a variety of visually connected spaces that inspire, support, and promote the discovery and exchange of knowledge.
So Malum Architects took these learning scapes, as we call them, and broke them down, applied them to the design in Arlington. And so what we wanted to do next was have Joanne from Malum talk about what that process looked like. Authentic and rigorous, it involved kids, it involved community, it involved teachers. And frankly, they didn't give us doors A, B, and C to choose from. They took the input from the community, from the kids, from the teachers, and have crafted a building that's meeting their teaching and learning needs. And so it's exciting to see the design, and I'm going to turn it over to Joanne.
Thank you so much. Also with me here from Malum is Cory Rosen. We would like to certainly thank the district and the vision for providing us an opportunity to continue the dialogue that we have as a firm been engaging in other clients and districts around the Pacific Northwest for several years. Can I borrow that clicker? Part of that dialogue, of course, began before we even received the project and this understanding of if we were truly going to be looking at a school design around space and how learning activities are happening and how we can support kids in a learner-centered environment, then we maybe needed to rethink architecture a little bit. So we got our staff together after looking at the ideas in the vision document and had a charrette. This is a full staff of about 70 architects that have been engaged in the practice of architecture at Malum for over 70 years. I won't date myself, but I know some of our CEOs would appreciate knowing that it's out there in the world. But this idea of imparting information with regard to how we could begin to address learning, we got them all together and we introduced the vision document that was certainly part of the work here as the committee members, and asked them to respond in sketch thought and process in how we could think about space differently. And these are just some of the images of that work, and I'll go through this really quickly because we want to get to the meat of the matter at Arlington. When you think about imparting information, it's about maybe thinking about one-to-one information exchange, so student to teacher. It could be about student to student. It could be about small group work. It could be about whole group work. So what you see are sketches that begin to question the idea of a single rectangular box in order to support those activities. The next idea is around thinking, the idea around contemplation, self-research, critical thinking began to inspire in us the idea that space could be created not just with walls and windows, but really with furniture, with division, with temporal environments that could support that type of exploration within a school environment. Discovery is really about the application or experimentation of the ideas that the students are learning. What does that space begin to look like? We began to think about, you know, the sheer transmission on the lower left-hand side of this traditional idea that learning has to happen with inside and that nature is outside. If we're really going to explore experimentation and connection between indoor and outdoor, can we just flip that whole dichotomy on its head and really think about learning that opens itself up both from the interior and the exterior? We began to think about this idea of creation, that it really inspires collaboration and fabrication. And if we're really going to push students to think outside of the box, then maybe there's a way that space, like the sketch on the left, can be about flexibility and provide open maker-type spaces that might have resources that students can pull from that might be cross-disciplinary or interdisciplinary. And then we might begin to think about the multiple uses of space, whether they're for performance or for hands-on making within the school. And then certainly the component of exchange, this idea that we have to be able to support both traditional exchange of information, but thinking about how exchange of information is happening now, both through technology and through student groups, small group, collaborative group. You know, what you see on the upper diagram is this idea that discourse is not only happening from teacher to student, it's happening within the student body, it's happening in a collaborative way. And so the space in the end should be asked to adapt as well to those different methodologies of exchanging information. This led us to the idea that the learning community on the left, even those that we see today that are being built, are still somewhat segregated, this idea that teaching happens inside the box and then flexible learning happens outside of the box. And what we wanted to really start to understand with this project and had the opportunity to explore with your staff, your community, your administration, and certainly through the vision document, is this idea of true integration, that activities can happen within the space, and they can also happen flexibly and nimbly between the two.
So before we transition into an active activity, I want to point out that we use the term Da Vinci or Makerspace. These have been going on for quite a while. I was talking with Kristy Berry, and we used to call them different things. And Kristy, I don't know if you're here, and I'm forgetting the schools that it goes back to, but-
Edison.
Edison? And what did we call the spaces before?
Instructional activities.
Instructional activities. So you folks have been moving that innovation along, and that's continuing to expand. So at Stewart is an example, we have atriums that look down into the Da Vinci spaces. We've got Makerspaces in just about all of the projects. And I'm going to save us some time. We brought boards that show layouts, that show renderings, that show pictures of construction and progress all around the room. We were going to do an easel walk, but to save some time, just going to let you know, you will see the concepts that we're talking about related to Arlington in all of the projects, all the way from elementary school all the way through high school. And so if we have time afterwards, I'm happy to stand and talk at another time, also share resources that are a multitude, multitude of resources that you can look at, including video and papers and data that talks about the impact of these kinds of environments on educational outcomes. So Cory.
That's represented certainly here within the current work that's around the wall. It's also represented at Arlington. And I think this is important that we note that this has been a continuation for us as a practice, but I think for the world of education, this isn't necessarily new thinking. It's really just clarifying thinking that's already happening. Arlington, you know, we began the process to try to understand, how can we fully immerse ourselves in the learning if we don't understand what the learning disciplines are, what activities are happening within the environment? So we began this collage exercise internally and with the staff to begin to really think about, what are the activities, what are the spaces that could support those activities around these ideas of imparting, of thinking, of discovering, of creating, and of exchange? And what we realized is that what this vision document was really asking us to do is to continue to learn about space and how we can support. And the real groundbreaking moment for us was that we're not the expert in this, we are the translator. We are the person that would wrap this idea around with space, but we're not necessarily generator of the idea. So for the process, what we want to share with you is that we stepped back and said, how can we learn the most that we possibly can from those who are currently doing the education, from those that are currently learning? And really started thinking about processes and developed processes that went through multiple workshops with the staff, with the administration, with the students, that really have led to the product of Arlington. We're going to invite you to stand up, and I've been told I have to take the mic, so we'll try to do this.
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to invite you to stand up, and certainly we were going to have you come and participate in this model. This is another way of responding to the idea that the learning environment should be immersive for the students, and that we were going to ask you, which you certainly can do, is continue to participate and select one or two of the learning activities that you see on the table and add them to the collage that you really want to see the students of Tacoma participating in. And certainly we'll take that back as part of the process as well. But I'm going to ask you to come up now to the boards that start to talk about that process, and then we're going to move back here to the table and be able to work together on the plan. Thank you. So I'm just going to introduce the process, the first board, and what we have shown are just some key critical moments within this process to help you understand. I don't bite, so feel free to come as close as you dare, because I know the fawn is quite small. But you know, what we wanted to talk about is the project goals that were established, not only based on the vision, but based on how Arlington operates currently and how they dream to operate in the future. What you can see is then a prioritization, and these goals were created by the staff, by the students throughout the entire process. And certainly you see some of the representatives here, Tony, Steve, Kristy, who are part of the executive group to help form those, and certainly Wendy and other staff at Arlington. Indoor/outdoor education was the highest priority goal, but you can see the top layer really all worked together. Indoor/outdoor education, exploration-rich environment, transformable teaching space, and technology-rich environment. There are certainly other goals up here that are no less important, draw community together, learn through collaboration, celebrate diversity. But really, we began to think about the project within the framework of these pieces. We established, I think we did three or four workshops with the students that ranged from a writing exercise, photography exercise, drawing exercise, to really elicit from them an exciting environment that would inspire them to come to school. And you can see some of that activity here. We then took all of that information back, did workshops with the staff around how we could think about programs around indoor and outdoor education, and created tools like hopefully you'll get to engage and will participate in engaging with, that allowed them to actually design for us the educational environment that would be at Arlington, starting from the inside out. Part of that process, of course, was in understanding that education, we still have to address a number of students in a classroom with a teacher, but education isn't necessarily about addressing all of those students in the same way. And so how can we really create an agile learning environment that allowed flexibility? In order to do that, we had to first understand this exercise, which looks quite confusing, but I'll be sure to explain it. From a teaching and learning idea, we asked for activities that are happening, creating, imparting, collaborating, discovering, experimenting. We asked staff and certainly district leadership to begin to think, in order to reach the students most ideally, what would, in a perfect world, what would the group size of that student base be? So you can see those indicated in the green dots. Then we asked them, what tools would you ideally have available to you in order to do that teaching and learning activity? And then with regard to either age, so primary or early learning, or with regard to discipline, to begin to highlight those three or four activities that they do most often in order to reach those learning goal points. What we found from that process was summarized here on this sheet. What we shared with them at the same time was the different types of space that we see throughout education design. These are all built spaces that we could study and analyze in how those spaces began to support those different group sizes and learning activities. What the exercise shared with us is that 23% of the time, ideally, the students would be organized in groups of 25 or more, and 77% of the time, ideally, there would be groups of 15 or less. And that was pretty phenomenal. Certainly, they recognize that I think, that they think that currently in their teaching practice, they're a little bit closer to 50/50, but this would be the ideal, this is where they want to reach for. So they asked for a building that would allow them to do this, to really be able to break up into smaller groups. And what we realized from this is that we had a certain amount of square footage and a budget to work with, but what we needed to do is rethink how we were breaking that space up to better suit these groupings, but still allow certainly the whole class to function in the way it always has and probably will for quite some time. So through this exercise, we really began to think about a plan that provided learning environments for groups of students that would be full-sized, that would be nimble enough to then give them more square footage than they currently have in traditional learning environments. So our goal was really, because in order to address this kind of flexibility and adaptability, we needed to be able to increase the amount of square footage that they were able to access as teachers for learning.
I want to interject that at Arlington, the way it's currently designed at about 54,000 square feet versus 68,000 square feet like Geiger, teachers will have almost double the instructional space that they have. And that's because of the efficiencies in the construction and what Joanne's talking about here. And I think it's strong from teachers saying that if they had the opportunity, they could work with 15 students or less versus 15 students or more, knowing that more intimate, lower teacher-to-student ratio, these are strong statements from the Arlington staff.
And we want to make sure that we also communicate that we can do that in an environment that's safe through transparency and connection so that those students, even when they're broken up into small groups, aren't ever out of the watchful eye of those instructors. So the question really came to us, how can we do that? And what we started to imagine is an environment that would, I'm actually going to, instead of staying here, I think we should go to the board, that could transform in a lot of different ways. The challenge really from the facility staff was that the space needs to be able to do that with very little or no construction. So how can it flex between all different models? So could it flex between a traditional learning environment where if orange is represented by traditional classrooms and purple is represented by shared learning space? You know, how could it flex in that direction? Or if we started to look in the future and maybe teaching and learning looks differently and classroom sizes are differently, how can it flex in some of these more collaborative models, peer collaborative models? How much teaching owner space could one teacher own? So this is really getting at, for example, each teacher in this model has access to about 1,500 square feet, wherein the Edspec program, they would only have access to about 900 square feet.
So we want to transition down to the tables, take about five minutes, so you have a hands-on activity, and then give you about 15 minutes to have questions.
So we're going to like shimmy in. I know it's a tight space, but if we can shimmy into this area.
I need them for later. Don't take them.
Shimmy, shimmy. I know. We apologize. We thought about shifting the room, but... So this is a model that we actually built, because we're trying to figure out, you know, again, we're not the experts. How can we create an opportunity for the staff and the students and certainly the leadership here at the district to begin to design the space? So we built this model. The only thing that's fixed is this. All of these pieces are movable. And we took it through multiple different venues with different staff and conversations about how they would design their own teaching and learning environment, and then continued to test them. We brought them back and brought them back. What you see is one of the learning environments that would support six classes worth of students and staff. Yellow represents that widened shared learning corridor. This is how you would access the learning environment. You would move through the space. It also offers opportunity for small group learning, shared learning, individual learning. So for example, pull-out program or push-in programs could occur in these spaces that are still acoustically isolated, close to the classrooms. The teaching and learning direct instruction happens within each of these spaces. And then pairs, in this particular organization, which was preferred by the Arlington process, the pairs of two teachers and two groups of students would also have access to a thousand-square-foot lab that would be directly owned by them only, and they would have access to about 1,000 square feet of shared space or the full 3,000 square foot of shared space. So you can imagine indoor recess, for example, happening out here. Or, you know, how fast did the bowling ball roll with physics? All sorts of things could happen in this big space. It's not an open plan. These are acoustic separations between both spaces. So you actually end up with more opportunity. Again, the challenge was really to how to create more spaces for them to occupy. So you get the ability to have acoustic separation, acoustic separation. This is the only area that's acoustically open to itself, although it's acoustically separated from the main corridor. Yeah, go ahead.
So to access the space...
Yeah, we can use this guy too to draw on, to access this space. I'm just going to move over here to this piece. So this is in essence, you know, this cluster or this cluster. So to access this space, you would move through the hall and you would pull into any of these learning areas. From then, from there, the classroom here could...
Can you describe the core learning areas?
Yeah, so the core learning area is intended for direct instruction. It fits the entire class. It's a little bit less than 600 square feet. It's essentially, if you think about a classroom, it would be all of the opportunities for direct instruction from a teacher or group work within, you know, small areas.
So if you're talking about a traditional teaching method, they would do that in the core learning areas, and then if they wanted to move out and do collaboration learning. Now, just like they put, like I use the example of putting kids in the hallways, they don't have to put kids into a cramped hallway where they can't see them. They can put them into a larger area with comfortable furnishings that flex and still see them and have better supervision.
So I hear you have outside, you have light from the outside.
Yes, yes. So the light is coming from above. So that was really important, if you notice on the plan. I think, Steve, could you point out the image of what it feels like to be in that space, the rendering in the middle-left right there? So what we have is a series of north-facing sawtooth skylights to make sure that we can have always even and balanced daylight. And the daylighting studies actually tell us that in this zone where we have that, you can actually teach with the lights off. So this is the most well-lit space within the space. Each classroom also has the ability to look into a learning courtyard or a green space one way or the other, right? So they all have the opportunity also to have the view glass vision out, but they always have the opportunity to have the daylight from above.
And I want to add, acoustically, we're doing extra because of JBLM and the SEEPa study. And so in the core learning areas where it's necessary to have quieter, more direct instruction, there's going to be even more acoustical separation from the outside and side to side.
It's right on the flight path.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So we have about 15 minutes. I want to give the board time to ask questions.
Yeah, sure.
And we could have done a lot more, but 45 minutes is a short timeframe, so maybe...
So my traditional heart, I just want to ask, so those six, the six that are on the outside of the kind of the open corridor, those are the rooms that if I teach fourth grade, send tunnels in room 103? Each one of those is like 103, 104, 105?
Yep. So this would be like the 101, 102, 103, 104. So addressing on the hall is essentially will happen on one side. You would move into that classroom space, and then each of these teachers have not only that space, but they also have access to the area in the back.
So team teaching.
Yep, so you can imagine.
Peer tutoring.
So really, that whole space is for basically six teachers?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's so cool.
Yeah.
Until we have small class size, then you have to use all those.
Yep, yep.
When they go to 17 kids.
Yep. And so it's also really well-suited for that, because, you know, what we were noticing... Well, you could either walk through. So you could either choose to essentially have a class here on every other one, and then you could choose to walk through this direction, right? So you could actually take that, and then you could divide that up into two. So with smaller class sizes, you get three out of one unit. Or you could, because of the connection with the exterior, it was really important that each of these learning environments also have a closed gated exterior area. You could also choose to access those from the outside. That would be a choice. So there's actually a fence that creates a courtyard for each of these learning environments. It's out here, it's out here.
Oh, oh, okay.
Is it somehow bound?
Yep. So, no, they actually all access one larger space. Yeah, so these are the outdoor spaces.
So that's a good question, just about safety. So the outside fence protects the, I mean, is the visual occlusion between that outside space and this?
There was so much conversation at Arlington with the kids about them, even though they really want the daylight, they photographed clouds, and we asked them, "Okay, why did you do this?" And they said, "Because we want to be teaching, learning outside." But then we asked them about the windows, and they said, "Well, I feel unsafe because anybody could walk by here." And so this idea of bringing the daylight in where the students are most of the time, and then allowing them to have that daylight, but still provide them the security, led us to this idea that we would actually want to contain the courtyards and have a boundary. So there's a fence that the public actually would need access to that allows them to put manipulatives and learning environments and grow garden things out here that are protected from then the outside area.
We also want to make note of the library here. These are depicting mobile bookcases that can be moved and create reading nooks and areas for kids. And then there's also a separate, where's this teaching space? Right here, library core learning. So you have a separated area, so the librarian or media specialist has the ability to do teaching separately from that library space.
So you can use those, the inside six rooms for like what Rob was talking about with the, like the small groups or the parent group where their read-to-me group and all those, and they have sight. So even if they, if they're not a certificated teacher, there's a sight line so that they can see them?
Yep, for example. So the spaces you're talking about could be here. So all of these rooms are acoustically isolated, so the students can really focus. Because what we know is that often those students need the most ability to control their surroundings, but there's still sight line for the teachers who are observing and watching out for those kids to happen. There's also the ability, you know, there are a lot of parent programs and volunteer programs can actually occur within the more open, shared, flexible area as well, and still leaving the instructors the ability to really control that back lab space. The other thing we've talked about with the teaching and learning environment is that when you have the three-phase rotational model of eight students to one instructor, they could actually imagine, for example, if you do a core instruction here with your entire group of students, and then you break them up into small groups, you could send several small groups out here, and you could actually keep one in here, keep the door open, but you could actually be meeting these kids' needs, and then everyone would rotate through still with observation. And that's not in a hallway space. It's in a contained space that has boundaries for the students.
Which fits right into your balance, that's the approach, here being able to buy folks up with good supervision and the targeted instructions.
And certainly what we heard is that that can happen in a large, single-one classroom, but the problem is that the teachers felt as though they're not actually meeting the needs, because what happens is you start talking a little louder, and the students talk a little louder, and all of a sudden, you're either whispering or you're not able to really communicate to the students who you're trying to really address. And so this idea of creating opportunities for acoustical separation but visual transparency really supported that work.
So what other questions are there? And I'll hand the mic around. It could be Vanna.
Anybody can draw.
So I want to just talk about, you know, within 10 years, we're going to have 17 students per class. We're going to use all of these for regular classrooms, so it's not going to be an extra space anymore. So are kids going to have to walk through? I mean, this is what happened when we did Bose so many years ago. People had to walk through one class to get to another class. They had to do that at Foss in the early days. And I'm hearing a lot of people say, "We're going back to models that we did 40 years ago that didn't work, that we had to remodel within five to 10 years of putting them in." And it's kind of frightening, frankly, for the taxpayers to look at that. So I'm a little afraid of it, frankly.
It's a great question. And Debbie, if we have that opportunity, we have to put in barriers. One of the nice things about the way we're constructing, we've talked about one-year, five-year, 10-, 50-year walls. These are being constructed. There are things called demountable walls or even panel systems that you can put in to create spaces without having to demo, without having to remodel. And so it's a fair question.
I think, I mean, this is a conversation that every district is wrestling with right now. And certainly, we've given it some thought. There are certainly ways that it can happen here without having to do any construction. For example, the legislation is really talking about 17 students per teacher, but it doesn't necessarily say that those 17 students need to occupy their own classroom. So you can imagine a group of 17 students here, a group of 17 students here, and a group of 17 students here with their three teachers, but they're one learning group. So you can imagine in addressing flexible learning, so meeting kids at their need, you can imagine that model could actually work quite well. And if everyone assumes that they're within the same learning group, then there's rotation and sharing that can happen within that. There's also the idea that you could think about, whoops?
I'm thinking of a walk-to-read model or a flexible grouping. So if you had three third grades in an area and teachers want to flexibly group them so they can move between groups, that situation would still work even if we're at 17 in a classroom.
Right, right. I mean, there are...
It seems like, I mean, so it does, it's amenable to the whole thing Jennifer's doing with trying to get inclusion and, you know, allow those flexible groups for, you know, for some of our students with disabilities that need the ability, you know, to be with a small group. Also, you know, just the highly capable groups, kids who need some time to cluster together because they've got, you know, they've got advanced needs, they need to be accelerated, but times when they can still feel connected to their regular class.
Yeah, for sure.
I think the building's not going to be the change, but it's not going to be a barrier to the change.
That's our goal.
So Rob's analogy of... I was going to yell out, Rob's analogy with the golf club. I'm a good golfer. You can see that, right, that angle? Is that a tennis racket or a golf thing? And those that have seen me on the golf course, no. The bottom line is, it's, the golf club isn't the answer. The teacher's still the answer. The tool will enhance the opportunity for some of this to happen. And in this model, and I appreciate what Debbie's concerns are versus the open, is it's taken that open concept to the next level to say, "If you don't want open, you don't have to have open." But you, the wall is no longer an excuse for you to do this, for you to collaborate, for you to bring small groups for these opportunities. It's no longer a visual opportunity. So I think the real innovation here is one more step of removing a barrier to putting a world-class teacher in front of every kid every day.
The other thing Catherine's pushing, which is the question you're getting ready to ask. But yeah, the thing that's the most important to me is...
The thing that's the most important thing to me that you talked about is that all of this came from the work that you did with the teachers and the staff, because then it means that they're already motivated to make the changes that they need to do to, you know, to utilize that space. So if they're thinking 73% of our time is going to be with small groups, then they're already going to be, you know, adapting their instruction to a model that's going to take use of, you know, that space.
Yeah.
So I can see how it would support multimodal learning, and that's good for kids, that's good for teachers and to support that. Today was the great shakeout, so I have EOC on my mind. If I'm a teacher in one of these spaces and I've got kids in all three of these places and something happens, and I've got to secure them immediately, how am I going to make sure I don't lose one?
Yep. Well, one of the things that we can do is there's a couple of different lines of defense. Each of these learning units have an ability to close off, so there could be a system designed, for example, in a panic that this door would lock. Then once you've got that under control, then you would, the idea that we've described with them is they would actually harbor here, but the line of visibility is here. So we are talking about curtains, that they would be able to draw really quickly rather than blinds, so that the level of transparency would be addressed. And then they can harbor in the place where they can get to out faster. So is that addressing your question?
Yes and no. I'm not necessarily thinking about just an active shooter scenario, which is what you're talking about. The great shakeout today was about earthquakes.
Oh, thank you. My daughter did that in her school too. Yeah, I can't wait to get home and see what it was like.
But if I'm, even if I'm evacuating from a fire, can I see beyond this furniture so there's not a kindergartner that I miss on my way out?
Yeah.
Do we know that there's not places that...
So, and just, that's a great question. So the furnishings, everything's going to be flexible. We actually have underneath what you're looking at right now, an example of that type of flexible furnishing. So most of the tables that you're going to see in those areas are going to be flip tables that are nested out of the way, so that they're only really being put in place like this when they're being used by kids in small groups. So egress is not a problem.
And they should have. I mean, we teach teachers right now to grab that book, you know, grab that count. They're not supposed to leave that room unless they know they've got everybody with them. So that's a precaution of protocol that we have right now.
I just don't want to make it more difficult for them.
I can comment on that even going back five years ago when I was still working. The minute you have an issue, you have a clipboard on that wall. That's the first thing you grab, along with your backpack and with your kids. And you're counting kids from the get-go and marking off. And so every classroom in the district, I believe, has one of those clipboards. So...
The only place it doesn't seem to work real well is at Cab.
Well, that's because the kids behave better than we do, probably. But one comment I want to make on this is I'd like to ask, what's the site size?
The full acreage of the site, the buildable area? Arlington, we didn't focus on the site here tonight because we wanted to really get into the teaching and learning.
6.3 acres.
Thank you. 6.3.
6.3, and how many square feet?
This is 54,000 square feet.
Compared to what they have now?
60...
So they're getting significant increase in, I mean, I, the way that this is designed for it to grow with whatever we need, I mean, I think this is groundbreaking and it's exciting. I'm not scared of it, because I can see it evolving in the way we went. We're going with the 10- and 5- and 20- and 50-year walls that as we as a district change, I can see our buildings now changing, that we're not going to be going out for bigger and bigger bond issues that we've had to do in the past. I like the natural light. I think, you know, I think I was talking to my husband about this open concept, and he said, "So what's big about open concept movable walls, and you can move kids around?" I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "Well, Peterton 59." Now, Peterton 59 was a one-room school built in 1925 in Kansas, built where my husband attended grade school, a K-8 school. It had like garage door movable walls, and it could be separated into four classrooms, one big area which became a community center for everybody. And he said, "Opened up during the day so the big kids could teach the little kids." So he said, "It sounds like you're not doing anything new. You're just going back to the future," so to speak. So I, you know, I'm very comfortable when he made that comment. What's new about that? And I said, "Did it work?" He said, "Yeah, it did." And he said, you know, "For collaborative learning," and he said, "All those terms that you guys use now when the big kids helped us and we had two teachers and so on." So, you know, I'm really comfortable with this. I think it's a great design. I know it's going to get tweaked in the building process, but we're going to be good.
So with that, we're at 7:30. I heard that you would be willing to stay if we have some additional questions.
Absolutely.
I would officially close the study session, but I think if we have questions and you want to play around, that that is certainly an opportunity.
I have one final comment, and thank you, Joanne and Malum, for joining us tonight. I've written a few things on the final thoughts slide, so take a look at those. But the one thing I wanted to say is, this still works, the old wood, and it works great. This hits it farther, and I want our kids to hit it farther.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.